All right, we want to welcome everyone tonight to the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education Meeting. It's Monday, August 27th, 2018. And with that, we call the meeting to order. Would somebody like to read the approval of the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, August 27th, 2018 Board of Education Meeting be approved as set forward, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Great, and is there a second for that?
Second.
And this is a roll call vote.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye.
All right, and Dr. Buck, next we'll turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Thanks, President Laberty. So, we were all incredibly excited to welcome students back to our buildings last week. Staff members and teams across our district spent the last few weeks and days of the summer preparing in a variety of ways for another successful school year. For instance, the entire staff of Harrison Elementary, including Harrison Connections, attended a two-day orientation on a transformation process called the Leader in Me, which is a social-emotional learning framework that incorporates the seven habits of highly effective people into a student's everyday activities. The Leader in Me is not new to our district, as you would well know, so Kenwood Leadership Academy adopted that for the 2016-2017 school year. Our annual staff kickoff was held last week on the eve of the first day of school. It was nice to see many of you in attendance. I'm sure you were as inspired as I was to hear from our speakers that day, including Riley Urbacher in 4th grade at Coolidge, and her mom Stephanie, Avery Kutchera in 8th grade at Harding, Mindy Hartman, a CR-CSD alum from Metro, and David Tominski, a community member, parent, and expert in entrepreneurship. The speakers amplified the importance of relationships in the context of academics, and the importance of recognizing that success has many faces and can be achieved through a multitude of pathways. A little bit of a side note, I was visiting Harding, I think it was the first day of school, and I went into a classroom and there was Avery. So I had a chance to go up and talk to her and tell her how many people I'd heard say great things about her, which she thought was pretty neat. So it was just a great sort of happenstance thing. Our students and families can now access our school menu options through Nutrislice, which offers powerful features to proactively engage in a personalized approach to a student's nutritional experience. Families can view our menus in over 50 languages, access nutrition information, including carbohydrate values, to make decisions as a family that are aligned with the child's dietary needs and preferences. Access photos, descriptions, and allergen information of menu items, and even provide feedback and rate menu items. So, thank you to our Food and Nutrition Department for their work to make this option available to our families. That's work, that's easy. We've received exciting news from EdLeader 21. It's been announced that we're the first Iowa school district to be a part of the 21 by 21 movement, thanks to our profile of graduate work. It's EdLeader 21's goal that by 2021, 21% of school systems across the US are engaging with their communities to develop and implement a portrait of a graduate. Last year, we worked with community members, including David Tominski, one of our speakers at our all-staff event, to develop our portrait of a graduate, and we couldn't be more excited to be the first Iowa school to join the 21 by 21 movement. That's good news. Congratulations to Joan Steckel for being selected as the Iowa Restaurant Association's Pro Start Educator of Excellence Award winner for 2018. Joan will officially be honored at the Celebrating Excellence Awards Ceremony in Des Moines on October 8th. And congratulations also goes out to Washington High School teacher and coach, Jordan Young. Jordan is one of the first appointments to the Governor's Teachers Cabinet. Governor Kim Reynolds announced on Thursday she's appointing her first Governor's Teachers Cabinet to give teachers a more prominent voice in education policy decisions. The teachers will meet quarterly with Governor Reynolds, Lieutenant Governor Adam Gregg, and Iowa Department of Education Director Ryan Wise to offer their advice about how to better prepare all students for the knowledge economy, elevate the teaching profession, and strengthen the direct line of communication between the governor's office, schools, and communities. Governor Reynolds named seven members to the cabinet and is seeking nominations for up to eight additional teachers by October 15th. Cabinet members will discuss issues like personalized learning for every student and exploring how to provide teachers more opportunities to blend real-world work-based projects into the curriculum. The first cabinet meeting will be held this fall. Congratulations to Jordan for being one of the people on that group. So, lots of good news to start the year.
Yeah, absolutely. What about board reports? Anybody have any comments? I want to personally thank Dr. Buck and Aqui and all of the team. Laurel and, I don't know, Noreen, oh my gosh, everybody that was there at the staff kickoff. A lot of us on the board were there for that event, and just the energy and the excitement and the messages that were coming from the guest speakers and from you as staff were tremendous. And really impressed with Dr. Buck that he could actually speak to all of the slides that didn't show up on the screen. I was floored, so that must have taken a lot of practice.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good, that was good.
It was good. It's so encouraging to be prepared.
Absolutely, yeah, no, I love it. So it's a good example for all of us.
Yes, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I do want to thank you for that. There is, Iowa Big still has an advisory board, and Dr. Buck and I serve on that advisory board, and they have another meeting coming up, I think in a couple of weeks here, so.
Yeah, wait for Wednesday.
So, that's still going on. We still have a lot of things as a board coming up. There is our annual meeting that will come up in September.
September 24th.
September 24th, and that's when we elect amongst ourselves as a board officers for the board for the coming year. So, if people have questions or comments, or would like to talk about different positions, I think now would be a good time, not necessarily right now, but think about it and let people know that you might be interested in something, so we can work on that for September 24th meeting. Yep.
John, as long as you brought that up, and I was thinking about this the other day. What would be the impact next year with the annual meeting when, with the board elections move to November?
It'll be a long year for whoever serves as an officer.
Do you, I mean, will it, do you think it'll move then, the annual meeting will have to move till?
So, the organizational meeting itself would move. The annual meeting, I believe, by Iowa Code is required anytime after August 31st, where you finish up your books. So, the elections would be that second Tuesday in November, so our first board meeting in December then would be the organizational meeting for sure, perhaps the annual meeting at the same time.
Interesting.
So, maybe one of the unintended consequences of the change in that law, but, yep. So that would be the case. Whoever runs for an office, you'll have to do it for a few extra months next year. All right, great. Well, if there are no other board reports, we'll go ahead and move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. And tonight, we have one request to speak before the board. And Mr. Funk, if you'd like to approach the podium, and as I mentioned earlier, Laurel Day will time for five minutes.
Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to speak. Good evening. My name is Steve Funk. My address is 366 Woodland Drive, Southeast. I have a daughter, McKinley. She is in the 7th grade this year. I'm here to talk about inadequate lawn care at the district property. I'm going to start with McKinley, but it's not actually McKinley. It's about a dozen vacant lots north of the school grounds. These properties are owned by the school district and are currently overgrown with crabgrass, giant ragweed, sapling trees. It's about this deep. These properties have not been mowed in more than six weeks. And like I said, grass and weeds are about two feet high and are out of compliance. They are non-compliance with Chapter 21 of the city code. Okay? A little tangent here, last week's New Yorker magazine had an interesting article describing recent research on the broken windows concept of urban decay. The research indicates that abandoned property and unkempt vacant lots contribute to neighborhood decline far more than previously believed. The article is available online. I'd highly recommend it. Interesting insights, absolutely. So here we have one of the city's most vulnerable neighborhoods, and right in the middle is an ugly, overgrown, bided eyesore. And by the way, people have started to dump their trash in these lots. Trash is piling up in these lots right now. So, I've heard that the school district is interested in community involvement and improvement. Might I suggest that these vacant lots, perhaps they could easily be and inexpensively be transformed into bark-like settings. There's beautiful trees there. There's some established grass. There's hope to have this transform this. Perhaps we could turn what is currently a district liability into a community asset. Part two. So, earlier in August, I raised the issue of school grounds with Principal Martinez at McKinley. It was, there was some difficulties there. His staff has made some fine progress in improving the grounds, but I believe these vacant lots are not the responsibility of the crew there. Also, at that time in early August, I drove around to some of the other schools in the district, kind of in extended condition, to see what's going on, and I found that degraded lawns and sport facilities are the rule rather than the exceptions. So, I took a look at some of the other schools in Lynn Mar College Community, even Iowa City, and the Catholic parochial schools in town. The difference was stark. Someone should be embarrassed, and something needs to change. So, I, once again, I want to thank the board. It's, I really feel that this is something that needed to be brought out. And like I said, I did talk to Principal Martinez about it there, and he is now aware of what's going on there, so, thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Appreciate it.
All right.
I'll be sure to follow up.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. So, Dr. Buck will follow up. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to pull for questions or for comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It is recommended, but the Board of Education approved the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, August 13th, 2018. This would actually, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My mouse didn't want to scroll down.
It's all good. So, we just need a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Great, and this is a roll call vote, personnel report.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move into our work session portion of the meeting to discuss the board goals for 2018-2019. And with it, I know the administration has put together some talking points to lead us into that discussion.
Yes, and I think we're going to work from the working table with you, and so we'll thank you for the opportunity to support your annual goals or possibilities of the direction that the board would like to go. What we thought we would do is start with kind of the current state, an overview of the revised strategic plan, and then dig into your, the direction you'd like to go for board goals. So, we're going to talk about alignment first, and then a review of our vision, mission, and strategic plan, and that's the five focus areas. Goal champions here, we'll each talk about their, the areas in which they lead around the five focus areas. And then we're going to look at some drafted goals based on where you were last year, perhaps some revisions, and then have a discussion about your hopes and things that maybe even aren't on our radar that you would like to consider. And then how we can continue to provide feedback loops on those goals as the year moves forward, whether that be through work sessions or board meetings, or even Friday updates, and how we can support the goals. So, this is a visual in front of you around what could be seen as alignment. And if you work from the outside of this circle graphic to the inside, we just want to remind you of how important your vision and goals have been to get to where we are today. All the celebrations that Dr. Buck highlighted at the top of this meeting happened because of your vision and goals. So, how much that impacts the rest of the system. So, your vision and goals launched a new strategic plan last year around Every Learner, Future Ready, which then drove the leadership team's improvement goals, which then drilled down to the buildings. And so if I were to put one more circle at the center of all this, it's children. And so it's a very student-centered vision that you've cast. And if we think from the inside out, starting with kids first, how does that come all the way back out to the board's work? So, again, you know our vision, Every Learner, Future Ready, but our mission has been identified to ensure all learners experience a rigorous and personalized learning experience, so they have a plan, a pathway, and a passion for their future. The profile of a graduate is very much anchored in that mission, and again, a product of your appointed committee of the School Improvement Advisory Committee. So, as a reminder, two years ago, we did the Theory of Action work, which is actually almost three years ago now, that anchored our beliefs. And those six areas identify what we believe as a district, and how the beliefs are moving forward with the action plan. So then, the Strategic Action Plan around the five focus areas, a year later, which was just last year, was then launched. So you can see how the beliefs are along the left-hand side, and then we have our five focus areas, which include metrics. Then, how we are going to get the work done, this is the HRS framework. So, how do we make sure that that strategic plan, which is anchored in our belief system, is happening? And so everything we've been doing is anchored in HRS, which now is in our school improvement plans. And you can see along the side there, it's all about every learner getting what they need from an equity lens.
And I just want to remind people, HRS is High Reliability Schools.
Yes, thank you. So, thank you for the reminder to make sure that we're acronym-free. So, if we think about your vision and goals and what you said a year ago, that helped drive our district's strategic plan. We're going to give you a quick update about each one of our focus areas, of those five focus areas. I know you have an electronic copy as well, but we're just going to give a really high view of each one of those five focus areas. So we're going to start with story.
Thank you, Noreen. The community relations team has been focused on pushing information out, as well as pulling our audience in with story. So, another way to think about this is the traditional journalism, hard news, soft news content. And so when we look at things like press releases, information that goes out to families and staff about the how and the what of what we do, that would be considered the hard news or the information being pushed out. When we look at our digital campaigns, our social media campaigns, and other ways that we celebrate the why, our students and our relationships and who we are, that would be the soft news. So, we've focused on using our communications to engage, inform, and inspire stakeholders. So, our families and our staff and our community. Last year, the Our Stories series was the social media campaign that really took the entire year to cover 31 schools. Because of the success of that campaign, the community saw in our schools in an entirely different way than I think they had in the past. And one of the focuses of that was to really saturate the digital media community with the messaging of our community and of our school district. The monthly e-newsletter that was sent out to, that one is actually one that is open to anybody in the community, so anybody has access to that link. It's a Constant Contact e-newsletter. And that's opt-in only to try to gauge authentic interest in the content that we're pushing out. The monthly all-staff email updates started going out last spring, and we'll continue to do that as a way to, again, engage and inform our internal stakeholders. And then, last year, we released a monthly average of 12.7 positive stories as press releases and our social media and web stories. This year, we are continuing work that we started last year and really digging into some of these areas. The facilities master plan microsite is just about ready to go live. The school district style guide and branding guide is something that we almost finished up this summer, and we'll be wrapping that up in the next month and a half or so. We also have a social media guide that we are in the middle of designing to help our staff members understand how they can best use social media as a tool to engage the community and the stakeholders in the important work that we're doing. And along those lines, also incorporating something called Brand Ambassadors into the work that we do. So, training certain staff members in this realm of what it means to be a brand ambassador using social media. Still working with technology to explore what our options are regarding a new website, so hoping that we would have a new website by the beginning of the following school year. And then, really excited about some PR campaigns and concepts that we're starting this year. You're familiar with the community coffees, and the first one is this September. And so those will be monthly, and we're hoping for anywhere from 20 to 50 people to start off by joining us at those, but right now, the interest on Facebook for the first one is at 130. So, clearly, you know, we won't have 130 people there. But hopefully, this is something that the community will start to appreciate as an opportunity to engage with our cabinet members in the work that we're doing. And then finally, focusing on building strong relationships with the traditional media sources as well. It's an interesting situation, because they don't rely on press releases anymore like they once did. So much of the information is just real-time. They look at Twitter feeds, a lot of information they're getting from Twitter. So, really trying to develop new ways of incorporating the media into what we do.
Can we ask questions now, or should we wait?
That's what I was going to ask.
What?
Are you guys okay if we ask questions?
Are we going to, yeah, okay.
There you go.
I was trying to just speed right. No, it's really exciting stuff.
The things that you're saying, and I love the idea of having a style guide ready, and I think that's really exciting, and I can only imagine how the schools are going to welcome that as well. I did have a question about the social media guide, and how far down that will go, and if it's going to start to impact the, or if you're looking at how prolific the arts and athletics accounts are at the schools, and putting some guidance on those, and whether they're student-run or faculty-run or whatever.
Yeah, so the guide will hopefully address a lot of that. One of the things that has become clear is policy and practice don't necessarily align. And so how do we create a situation in which we are clear about what our policies are, but that our policies also match current practice too, and what best works in a situation like ours, where we're trying to use a variety of different media to push our messages out? And so, you know, for instance, Twitter, the number of Twitter accounts related to different activities with the Cedar Rapids Community School District is astounding.
Yeah.
And so how do we sort of build some sense of consistency, rein some of that in, but also give people the freedom to really do what they do well right now, which is use those accounts to push out really important information? So trying to figure out what that balancing act, what that balance is, and then communicating that through the guide. I imagine that there will be sort of layers of staff members, so administrators of an account, for instance, and then people who have access to that account who upload information to it. And it will depend on people's familiarity and comfort level with social media. We can't assume that everybody is as comfortable with it as the Noreen bushes of the world, or the Carlos grants of the world.
So there will be official sites, like versus, I guess I'm just thinking of like the, anything that has Cedar Rapids, Washington on it, or those kinds, I'm looking at you because you have students, you guys have students in the district now, that, I mean, like, I get banned alerts, and I get just everything, and I think it's great, and I love it, because it gives me the opportunity to be exposed to things that I'm not able to go to and stuff. But there's also that concern that I have about sometimes those are used inappropriately, and how do we protect ourselves to make sure that that's going in, so.
Right, and the guide will hopefully address that.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to bring up as well. When you have a kid that's involved in multiple things, you have multiple coaches, multiple people, multiple text messages, emails, and it's like, okay, there's not really consistency or uniformity. So, I was kind of thinking the same thing, that, you know, as time goes on, aligning that and having those, you know, policies or, you know, procedures on how to actually put those together, and maybe not, so there's so much overlap and so much communication. Because I'm excited in where we've gone from where we all started, and I think, as a board, we all were thinking, hey, there's better ways for us to connect with people, relate to people, and those stories are a big deal. And then now to kind of implement the community coffees. I guess for now, I'm excited to kind of see what we start with, and then where we end up, you know, whether we stay with one location or consider other locations, stuff like that as time goes on. But yeah, I'm with you, Kristen, a lot of communication, a lot of different things.
Well, and it's just, because I know the banned one is run by a student. And she's done a great job so far.
And maybe it's something that, I mean, that's a school thing as opposed to, you know, from the top down at a district, decide what our policy and procedure is, but at least tighten it up a little bit more within the school if possible.
I just have a quick question. I think it's probably, it depends on what school you're at, but I know that a lot of the schools that I've been involved with, their PTA, social media, will be used to kind of push in information. That is a volunteer coordinator information, as well as PTA stuff, as well as school-wide stuff. So just wanted to know if there were plans to kind of loop them in, or say, can we kind of handle some of this content now that is school-based content, not PTA-based content? But they're just kind of the speaking, the voice for that right now.
I will make a note of that for myself, because PTA and their accounts was not something that I was necessarily considering in the context of the social media guide, so I'll keep that in mind.
Is there, are you referencing some outside resources also that might? This has got to be a national concern, I mean, not just Cedar Rapids. Have you come across some guidelines from other districts, other schools, other states that help?
We have, and the social media guide that I'm creating is actually designed from a template that other UENS have used as well. So, we're trying to align what we do with others, other partners too.
Thank you.
All right, so we're ready to move on in the presentation.
Okay, great. So I will talk a little bit about the workforce. So as we think about the workforce, our main goal in the workforce is to build a highly engaged workforce and employees that are satisfied and come to work on a daily basis. And so we've got a number of focus areas for 2018-19, and some of these are some pretty big goals that we have. The first one is looking at the diversity hiring strategy. So we presented on the diversity strategy a few weeks ago. Pleased to say that we are in the process of the search for that diversity contact, and we hope to have that individual named by the end of September, and then we will be able to move forward with the diversity plan and start implementing that hiring strategy. We've also, last year, we did some great work, the substitute task team, which was a core about 22 people coming together and talking and thinking about the substitute shortage that we had, and what things could we do to improve that? That team walked out with about 28 recommendations. And so we are in the process this year of implementing those recommendations. One of the most notable one right now is the approval that we had to hire permanent full-time subs in the buildings. And many of our buildings have gone off and hired at least one, if not two, full-time subs, which we think is really going to help in the coverage of absences and that type of thing. We also will be focused on our leadership capacity. So we all know that we all have development areas and learning, and leadership is no exception to that. And how do we really create autonomy within our leadership and empower them to make the decisions that are necessary? and we hope to have that individual named by the end of September and then we will be able to move forward with the diversity plan and start implementing that hiring strategy. We've also, last year, we did some great work. The substitute task team, which was a core about 22 people, coming together and talking and thinking about the substitute shortage that we had and what things could we do to improve that. That team walked out with about 28 recommendations. And so we are in the process this year of implementing those recommendations. One of the most notable one right now is the approval that we had to hire permanent full-time subs in the buildings. And many of our buildings have gone off and hired at least one, if not two, full-time subs, which we think is really gonna help in the coverage of absences and that type of thing. We also will be focused on our leadership capacity. So we all know that we all have development areas and learning and leadership is no exception to that. And how do we really create autonomy within our leadership and empower them to make the decisions that are necessary for their schools? We will be increasing the number of teachers trained in the new art and science of teaching. We're still continuing that work. As long as, additionally, the high reliability school leadership development and growth model, just like our schools did the school improvement plans, the district also created a district improvement plan. So we look forward to implementing that as well. Another big rock for us is the, we had committed during negotiations to focus as a team collaboratively on a number of different work groups. Some of those items include implement weather policies, our leave of absence policies, as well as evaluation, lane change, microcandling. And that's really gonna be work around getting together with whomever is entrusted in these topics and similarly to what we did with the subtask team, coming together and creating solutions for problems that they face every single day. So that will be a great process to go through. And we hope by creating this highly engaged culture, we will also start to see an increase in our engagement survey and the results that we see there. And then one other thing that we really need to do next year is start to review and possibly investigate in a new HR system. Our HR system is a homegrown system and it's served us very well up to this time. But as we grow and we have more complexity in the data that we need to be able to retrieve and the information that we need on our workforce, we need to start thinking about what kind of system is gonna best be suited for us to do that. So those are some of the big areas for the employees and workforce.
Any, yeah, Nancy?
So when you think you had full-time substitute teachers in the schools?
Correct.
So how many at the schools?
So our goal is to have every school with at least one full-time sub.
Okay.
Some of those schools, depending on the needs of the school and the size, they may get two or three.
Oh, okay.
The substitutes, the building substitutes that are in there, if they are not teaching in a classroom, are they being used for like small group work or are they also like behavior modification kind of certified? Are they?
Yeah.
How many hats are they wearing?
Yep, so when we create, when we got together and started to work through the plan of how will we utilize the full-time subs, the team had decided, there's a chart that they're using that says if they're not needed in the current building, then the first option is that they share them with some other groups, other buildings in the same kind of area geographically. If that, if no one needs them there, then they can go out broader, so maybe all schools. And then if at the end of the day, there is not a need for them, which is highly, highly unlikely, but if we got to the point where we didn't need them in another school, then they could work one-on-one with students.
Gary?
Now that school is officially started and we have kids in class, how many positions, how many teaching positions are currently unfilled in the district? Or do we have some positions? I'm assuming we might have some.
We have very few, I'm sorry, Gary, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can get it for you. But we were, as we were getting close to the beginning of the school year, last year, my experience was the very week of school starting, we were scrambling, trying to get a lot of waivers from the state on substitutes and that type of thing. We did not experience that this year. There were a number of times throughout the summer in which we said, we are completely full, we have all of our teachers hired, and then we'd have a couple of people who resigned that would then create a new opening for us. So we had a couple of very last-minute ones that happened there in August that are not filled. So we have at least one that was kind of a hard-to-fill position for sure that's still open, but very few. I'll get that number for you though.
Any other, oh, Raphael?
I want to thank Rod for getting back the information on attrition and the number of teachers. And as I look at that data, and I appreciate you going back three years, I think, with that, that we're seeing a steady increase over the last three years with non-retirement teachers leaving the district. So I find it concerning, as I'm sure you do too, that something we need to continue to work at.
It might be interesting to contextualize that, though. I don't know what's happening statewide in those rates. And I don't know what's happening, well, one of the things we know is newer to the profession, teachers tend to have higher attrition rates than those that are farther along in their careers. So it could be an intersection between a number of dynamic factors that may be impacting that data in ways that in the aggregate aren't telling the full story. So yes, I'm concerned that the percentage is increasing. I think, though, looking, taking a little time to dig into those numbers as a priority might tell an interesting narrative to you. I just don't know, I don't know what that is here.
Good insight.
I think that's fair. Raphael, you had a question?
So Linda, just wondering, so from a HR management system, like what are you thinking? Is it something that's a risk that's sitting out there now that we need to address sooner rather than later? Just kinda noted investigate, is it something that would be nice to have, something that would elaborate a little, please?
Yeah, so that, so I find it difficult as an HR professional to use a system that we have because what I'm used to in regards to being able to get data and information and workforce analytics to help us make decisions, so even this conversation that we're having about what's going on with our attrition, without having a data system to be able to really dive into that, what happens is we have resources that spend a tremendous amount of money or time gathering that information and it may or may not be accurate. So from a data analytics perspective, it's very challenging from that piece of it. But then just the ease of employees and information at their fingertips and being able to access a system and retrieve the information that they need, being able to self-serve is difficult as well. And so if you have a system that's coming in, there's a lot more that you can do. So for example, HR took 700 calls in the month of August so far. These are, that's not a system-dependent process because employees can't access and find this information on their own. Now, I don't know how many of those they could have done on their own, but a good portion of them.
Are there CATS products that are, that you know of that are worthwhile?
So this is part of the challenge that we have to go figure out because there are, there's definitely products out there and we have to find the best product that suits our size. And so there's a lot of different ones that are out there that are great for smaller districts, but to find the one that's really in our niche, so we have to start doing that research and that, so that's why it says investigate, because I think this year is gonna be spent talking to a lot of different vendors, seeing a lot of different systems and really trying to understand what the problem is that we're trying to solve. You have to know that first and then be able to identify the system that's gonna be most appropriate for that. So it'll be a process. Yeah. In my experience, these take anywhere from 12 to 24 months to actually implement.
Okay, thanks. Other questions or comments on the workforce part?
I have a question about the new art and science of teaching. It's more of an instructional question, I guess, even though it's under workforce.
Sure, yep.
So it's a framework, so is that a framework to support what we already have in place? If it's, okay.
Yep, so it is broken into three major areas, which are content, feedback, which is a lot of assessment components, and the third is context. And so that's how are you building a responsive classroom? So much of it is aligned to a lot of work that we've already done. The difference is, is there's growth scales that can really support and give a lot of resources for teachers where they wanna hone in on their own practice.
Excellent. I thought it was as much, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Are we ready for the next school area?
We are ready, I think.
Champion Facilities, I think you're talking to this.
Oh, hey, that's me. All right, so facilities. So by way of reminder, we're in year two of our strategic plan. Year one for facilities was to work with a committee of about 80 to 85 people that went through a process, arrived at a plan in front of the board, and the board was, the board approved that plan, I believe, in January of last year. So as we look about this coming year as it relates to the facility's strategic goal, so we are working, and Aqui's already mentioned it here, but we're working on the microsite for the facility master plan, and then we have some other strategies. We have some businesses that would like us to come and do some lunch and learns with staff and really get in and around. My guess is it'll be one of the topics at the coffee and some of that kind of thing. And then this would be no surprise, we, that was voted with the idea that it would be funded through the extension of the SAVE. So we have some work ahead of us to continue to work on the extension of the SAVE. The good news in that, and this has been articles in the news, a variety of newspapers and other sources recently, that this is a statewide issue and a statewide desire. So this isn't just Cedar Rapids talking about this, it's districts all across state, easily the majority of districts. So we need to continue to work on the SAVE extension. And then I believe it was in May, we put about five ideas in front of the board about, so the SAVE didn't pass, although it passed with over 90 votes in the House. The SAVE didn't pass, so we put out some ideas about how that could implement timelines and had a discussion, I think that was in mid-May, would that have been right?
I think that was mid-14, yeah.
So this implement phase one of the board-approved facility master plan, phase one, by way of reminder, is New Coolidge, New Jackson Elementary, and Repurpose Truman. And then at the, that then is the end of phase one, currently scheduled for the start of the 2022 school year. So my guess is we will wanna bring that conversation back in front of the board perhaps in November or so, just to give us some additional guidance on what you might like to see us do with that. And I say that because one of the options, I think it's option three, for example, is to move forward with the process to pick an architect with, and start that process in, say, January, for example, with the recognition to that architect that until that SAVE extension passes, we wouldn't actually begin the work, but we could begin the work of choosing the architect, for example. So probably in November or so, we need to get that conversation back in front of the board for some additional guidance on what you'd like to see happen. So that's kinda where we are with the facilities conversation.
Any questions on the facilities? All right, moving on.
Okay, intercultural mindset. And I'll start with this chart because I think it just helps remind us that approaching education and all of our students from an equality perspective will not help all of our students achieve the levels that we know that they all can. And so it really is moving and growing our mindset around equity and how can we help provide the resources that students need based on their context. And so I think it really mirrors this new art and science of teaching, that whole context area of understanding where they come from and their backgrounds. Last meeting, I shared with you the engagement results and this is those questions related to the cultural awareness and you can see that staff members certainly said and gave us feedback that they need more professional development around this. You can see that there are two questions. Staff members have received adequate training and that it's helped them do their job more effectively. We saw a little movement in that year over year, so we believe that we're on the right path, but it's just not, we haven't gotten all staff members there yet. We haven't provided training for all of them yet. So we're still on that course of getting that out there. So this is our plan for this year. We did engage the executive council back here in August with the intercultural development inventory, and we saw growth in that group over two years. They were a group that was sitting in minimalization and they actually moved to acceptance. So we see that it works, that as people focus and get their feedback and then begin to put their own development in place, that they really do grow their mindsets. The professional learning that is gonna happen this year, if you remember last year, we had Hoover, McKinley, and Jefferson as pilot schools. They went through all of the professional learning. We will actually do a reassessment of them this year to measure their growth. And then we're starting these other schools, actually Harrison, Jackson, Franklin, Roosevelt. And we did actually add Kenwood as well. So they're gonna go through that learning this year. And I'll tell you that they've already started really here in pre-service of taking the assessment and beginning that journey. And it is amazing to see the excitement that they are having in just talking about this and discussing this topic. And the light bulb's going on to say, wow, now I can see how I can better relate to the students in my class. We also want to, through our coaching, not just intercultural mindset, but growth mindset. How do we continue to help our staff grow their mindset so that they can understand that students can continue to learn at high levels? High reliability schools framework, you saw in that framework that if we can accomplish all of that, then it really should get at driving equity and reducing the disparities between the different subgroups. But we just started that journey last year. We focused on level one. We've got to, this year, begin to focus on levels two and three, which is effective teaching and the guarantee of viable curriculum. So we will do focused work on that this year. The equal opportunity schools programs and those strategies, we started that work last year as well. And if you remember, this is where we have this process of helping identify students who really could engage in these different pathways, whether they're AP or dual credit, whatever those pathways may be, less identify more and more students who have not traditionally gotten into those courses. And then we know that engaging the family is really critical in this work. We want to make sure that we engage families, no matter what that family structure is. How do we reach out to them? How do we get them involved in the educational process of their child? So we're gonna start this year of studying that and looking and seeing what are best practices around that to hopefully begin implementation in the next school year. And then there's always work to be done around the social and emotional learning. And so we're gonna revisit the curriculum that's used around that to make sure that we provide those resources for staff as well as the students to continue to grow here as well. So that's what we're tackling here with the intercultural mindset.
And questions, Jennifer?
I think that this is all wonderful work. I think that, I was wondering if there is any, in addition to the family engagement strategies that'll be kind of rolling out, if there's going to be also an engagement strategy that'll be used with support services, like before and after schools, just so that they kind of know what district is accentuating where we're heading and see if there's some alignment that can happen there.
I think that, I'll take a note of that because I actually do think that we do provide a lot, but I'm not sure that all students know all the things that we do have out there. And there may be some gaps. And so if we, I think, do that inventory, we'll learn some things. So it's a great suggestion.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
A quick question, Rod, for IDI. So with all the buildings listed, were we looking at a whole-building approach? So everyone, all work groups are, they're participating in that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all work groups. We wanna make sure that everyone in that building, because all of them touch students in some way.
Right. Okay, and I know, you know, we've kind of, as a board, made diversity a priority for staff. What do you see or what have you seen, maybe challenging-wise, when you have a staff that doesn't really have a lot of diversity and, you know, kinda working through the IDI discussion?
I sat with a group Friday, actually, and we had this discussion because we said, one of your biggest challenges is that you're all the same. And so you can't challenge yourself to think differently. And so you've gotta really begin to leverage the students in your building and the parents because they can help you grow your mindset, but you've gotta take the time to listen. And I think it begins with when they take the IDI assessment, they begin to see where they are. And if you remember in the assessment, it has two components to it. One is where you perceive yourself to be and the other is your kind of developmental orientation. And so where you perceive yourself to be is where you think that you're performing at, but the developmental is where people experience you. And so that's kind of an aha for them to say that I'm at minimization and I think I'm at acceptance, but the students really, I can hear in their feedback that it's minimization. And I think that some of those light bulbs go on there. And I think that some of those light bulbs go on there.
Okay.
And so then, as they begin to work on their individual development plan, they can put some things in place to begin to reach out beyond their own group to learn about others.
Yeah, and it starts with that acknowledgement, so I'm happy to hear that. Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to the next.
All right. Well, not to say this is the most important, but I think it's the most important, and that is future-ready learning and our kids learning every day in our classrooms. So just, I'm not going to get into the details here, but some high-level work that was accomplished last year that's certainly impacting us this year is, again, we've highlighted the profile of graduate work, but also our learning plan. I like to call it the learning plan, also known as the technology plan, has really helped us assess our current state and where we would like to go. So that has impacted how we're moving forward with our, our learning plans. In addition to that, honing in on what our most leveraging assessments will be to target our work. I think you know we've had a lot of concentration on early literacy, especially elementary literacy, and so we've decided to leverage that particular assessment data this year to set some marks on how we're moving the dial and then making some acute plans for our middle school level literacy as well as all, all pre-K through 12. So the, some of the actions you'll see here are to continue to focus on our profile of graduate work, unpacking that into the rubrics, presented some samples when we talked about the future-ready learning presentation last spring. And we will be inviting some volunteers throughout our system, both parents, students, as well as staff members, to create an action plan of how to bring those rubrics to life within our classrooms, and hopefully how we in the future report on it, which gets us to the second bullet item on the box, in the, in the gray box there, which is a data collection system. So we've been talking about this, right, all the time? And so what's happening with our new membership on our administrative team, really focused on digital literacy and access, how do we create a high-quality data system? So focusing on data quality from input to output, so we are assessing everything as the technology plan states, from our student information system and how we're using our student information system, similar to the HR highlight, do we have the right thing for our state and what, for our current state and what our kids need, all the way to Tableau, which is we've adopted, and now we're beginning the implementation plan for that data visualization system. I'll fast forward to the last two bullets, which you can see the word that's underlined there. You might get sick of this word, but we are talking about access, 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 access for all kids, which means that all adults need access too. So our first metric, and we did some work, John Rice, our Executive Director, Instructional Services, did a high-level view on August 20th with all staff around our guaranteed and viable curriculum, did an audit of how our adults are accessing the guaranteed and viable curriculum. Can they access it through Canvas or can they not? And that data was so powerful that we'll be able to plan really the rest of the year and how we're supporting our teachers throughout our entire system. So those are some of the data points that we're using to drive the work forward so that every child has access to the guaranteed and viable curriculum. And then finally, just wanted to note about our standardized system, our standardized assessment system. The Iowa assessment will be new this year, it will be a new Iowa assessment, so we'll be collecting baseline data on that because it will be the first time that we give it. Juniors also will have the opportunity to take the ACT due to our relationship with the Gear Up program. And then that early literacy focus on our FAST assessments, so proud of the growth we had on that spring data, and we want to continue to see that dial move, and we are learning from each other. Some buildings had some real highlights, and the elementary PLC admin group is learning from those celebrations. So we are going to set some dials around the FAST assessment for metrics. So access, you're going to hear that word over and over again. We're going to continue to work on our profile of graduate and implementation plan. So we've got the destination, now how are we going to get there? And so now we want to start talking about how we can support you and your goals. So the strategic plan, the five focus areas are really a product of the work that you've launched and your vision. So as we move forward into your work and your goals, you have an electronic document that really is a revised version of last year's document, so you'll see much of the same language. We've added some notes as just some teasers and some starts to think about if this is the direction which you would like to go, but I want you to think about where we started, and that's the discussion around alignment. So as we talk about your goals, really want you to make sure that we're considering all voices in the room and perspectives at the board table. Continue to focus on the big picture, we know we can't get too far down in the weeds, and the equity of the voices in the room. The commitment, your constant commitment to student-focused action, and if I were to go back and do those circles, I'd put kids at the center of that circle of our alignment circles. And then the focus on how will we know, what are the results that you'd like to know from the board work? So we've talked about your goals from where they were last year, how that drove the district strategic plan in our updates, which drove our actions, and now we're using the high reliability schools framework. Linda highlighted that now this summer, we had an orientation with the leadership framework. So I'm going to show you a little bit, just one shot. If you look at the 1.4, I'm going to read this aloud. This is a, a leading indicator for our district leadership team that we are using to support around Level One work, which is a safe, supportive, collaborative environment for all schools. So it says the district leader ensures that teams and collaborative groups regularly interact to address access, access regarding curriculum, assessment, instruction, and the achievement in all students. I'm not going to get into the lagging indicators there, but we have set actions for us to hold ourselves accountable and be transparent with our leadership teams, as well as all teachers, all staff, of what we are doing to try and support them in their work. So that then drives how we're supporting buildings. What buildings identified in their school improvement plans helped us identify what we needed to do. So you can see district sits in between here. What does the board need? How are we supporting schools? What do schools need and how are we balancing that? So then this is a sample, quick view of a school improvement plan around that same area of 1.4, which is about collaborative groups. And you can see they've unpacked Level One around three leading indicators, 1.1, 1.4, 1.6. I won't reread this, but the one in the middle, 1.4, is about those collaborative groups. And then this particular school unpacked that and said, these are the actions that we're going to do to make sure we're improving on 1.4, and these are the deadlines for us to make sure that we meet it. So we want you to know that the direction that you've set is driving the real work, but that we're looking for system alignment to support the Board's vision and goals. So when you make your priorities, know that the important stuff will get done as long as we measure it. So that's the next level of our discussion.
Awesome, thank you, Noreen. So I, I think one of the, the clear things when we had the initial conversation about bringing this discussion of board goals forward was that it's a symbiotic relationship. So we want to make sure that our goals are aligned with the district goals, that we're also very clear with Dr. Buck as our sole employee of the school board, that this is what our goals are for him, and he agrees with those goals, and, and we've, over the last three years, been able to come, come to that agreement. And the second thing is then, prior to this meeting, we've, we've asked all of you, the administrators, through Dr. Buck, to give us suggestions of things where there might be, you know, tweaks, and I'm assuming that those are some of those notes in the other colors.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So, and I appreciate that, and I, I know all of us, as we look through this, my sense is that the board overall feels that there's been a strong alignment to where we're all going, we're moving together. We've, we have multiple conversations about these with Dr. Buck and at the board table with all of you, but this is a time to tweak, and I appreciate some of these things. As, as we look at this, one, one thing, I just want to make sure that in the goals, we don't get too far down into the weeds, so to stay, again, the board at that 30,000-foot view, and although there are a lot of, in particular, Linda, just looking at some of the HR goals and wondering, you know, I, there's a lot of things going on there and it gets very specific, and I'm wondering if maybe we can pull together, just this is my opinion, something that's just a little bit broader in terms of supporting the HR enterprise and, you know, and, and I haven't personally come up with the language for that, but I, I don't know, do other board members have any thoughts on that at all or? On the suggests, so.
You're looking at the item, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the same thing that you are. Item four, at the bottom of page 22, top of page 23.
Okay, so, so Linda, Linda is L-N, so under number three, there's support implementation of subtask team recommendations, and then, yes, in item four, there's, there's one, two, three, there's four different things in there.
So I like that broadcast view of thinking of things from like the big picture, and so I just went ahead and put the norms back up. Would you like to, President Laberty, go through each one of these, and if it's good as is, that we could knock out each one of your goals if they're good as they are, and then the ones that need tweaking, tweak? And if it is only a couple, then we could zoom in our energy on the couple that you want to tweak?
Yeah, sure.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's absolutely great. Thank you for that.
Awesome. All right, so let's start with the first one, which is the continued work on the strategic plan, which really is a five-year plan to 2022. Any feedback on that or concerns?
I, I think it, from my point of view, it aligns with exactly what we're doing and...
So if you're a thumbs up on that, we can move...
The rest of the board, if you have questions or comments.
I see one, two, three, four thumbs up.
Yep.
Are we good on goal one?
So the, I mean, the only small is a tweak on 2017, 18 to...
Oh, sorry, yep.
To change that to 2018, 19.
2018, 19, love that, thank you. Plus?
And then number two is the visionary governance team in partnership with the superintendent.
So then, again, we would change those school years.
Yep. But otherwise, I'm not, I'm not seeing anything that deviates from what we've been working on and focused with Dr. Buck and his vision.
Do I get a thumbs up for two? Hey, you have two very clear priorities. Excellent.
Well, and I, and again, I'll just say, I think continuity in some of this is really key to making this work because I've been part of boards, and I think, you know, sometimes early on, we were jumping around at what's, what's the latest and greatest thing, and it's very easy to get off track. And as we talked about at the last board meeting, we kind of need to get rid of some of that destructive, one-off stuff and really focus on what's most important. So again, hopefully what we're trying to do is get at that, at the 30,000-foot view level so that you all at, at the administrative team level can take it and run with the, down in the weeds, so to speak, so. So number three is the continual focus on student learning and successful outcomes. So every child is future-ready.
So we added a couple notes there. Linda highlighted the subtask team, which really has impacted student learning when we haven't had subs. But if that seems to be a one-off that we want to go back to the workforce goals, we certainly could consider that. The other is we added a sub-note under C, it looks like an I, but it's supposed to be a little Roman numeral one, is the, which it is, the Roman numeral one, but it's also a little I, as analyzing student learning data aligned to student learning goals, that we heard you loud and clear at the last session, and make sure that we're bringing that into each session as we have board presentations. And then also, when we discussed board presentations at the last meeting, that you really liked some alignment with those five focus areas, a clear template, and ways in which each work session's being presented. And that seemed like a goal for you, and, but it really is implementation for us, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be there, but we wanted to pronounce that.
Yeah, and I, I think that that's key is when I'm looking at the language of the goal, I mean, we need to make sure that the language that is in here are goals, and to me, that's, those are things that we're doing to demonstrate that we're achieving and, and, and supporting those goals that don't, and it doesn't necessarily need to be in there.
Yep.
As far as the supporting of the implementation, I agree that, that there is a crossover, definitely with the goal, the big goal three, and wondering if maybe it can be noted somewhere, but the, the actual goal for work should probably be somewhere else.
Yep. And that would be true too for the presentations, no?
Yeah, I, I think, for me, the presentations is just an, I mean, it's not necessarily a goal, it's just an overall assumption that this is how, this is how it will be communicated, kind of like that, you know, the, the strategic, the style guides. This is the style guide for how presentations will happen because that, that's basic expectation so that we understand how it's going. Does that make sense?
I think, you know, as I look at our board agendas, and this has been intentional and we've sort of developed it, so board goals slash focus areas, there are the five items, visionary governance, student learning, culture and climate, fiduciary oversight, and advocacy, and then the strategic plan and focus areas, future-ready, the story, workforce, learning, intercultural mindset, and facilities. Those are on there for a reason, for the board and to be transparent with the public. I think that everything that we do, we're trying to, to focus on those things. So if it, I think if it helps administration, you know, understand that that's what we're about and, and to make sure that what you're bringing to us has that as the focus, that might be helpful, but I don't know, but for me, as a board member, I know that that's, that's where we're at and that's why it's already in there. So do we need to repeat, add? Any thoughts?
I don't, I, I think it's purpleist.
I think as long as it's understood, it doesn't need to be spelled out.
Gary?
I'm going to make a comment, and I'm not sure, I'm trying to keep it at the 20,000-foot level, and I'm not sure if it, if it falls here, but I know we have continued to have concern over closing the achievement gap. And one of the things that I was thinking about earlier today with this is that, and I, I think we're, we're making the effort, but I guess I would like to, to, to hear more about it, and the idea of teaming, not, not forming a team, but teaming. And part of that concept would mean that we have to accept the fact that we feel, that recognize we're not, not have, not been successful, and are there outside resources? Are there community resources? Are there other things that, working with the problem, working together, teaming, that we could address the, the problem? And so far, we haven't had the, the kind of positive results that we would like to see, and so is there a way of, of using the concept of teaming with, with other organizations, with other outside entities, even with, within our, our district, with the sharing of thoughts, and be willing to experiment, be willing to accept failure maybe that may go along with it, but right now, we haven't had the results, and so could there be a better way? And would teaming be a way of doing it?
I do think with our, we are learning from others, I, just a, a quick example, but we highlighted the 1.4, leading indicator around collaborative groups, which very much highlights the concept that you're discussing, although it's within the inter-teams within a school, professional learning community within a school, and the collaborative teams. But in addition to that, when we're learning this process with a common language around the high reliability schools, we're in the high reliability schools network. Just as an example, I don't think they'd mind if I said this, Lynn Mar's also a high reliability school network. So there's lots of our neighborhood folks who are part of the PLC process that I agree with you, working smarter and not harder, and learning from other people and how they've been successful, but I think having a framework of a common language is going to help strengthen our system.
And it may be that, again, we'd like to see system-wide change, but maybe that, maybe it starts with increments, maybe if we've, if, if a site or a building or several buildings have an opportunity, have a, a plan, an idea of how they can impact, being empowered to be able to, let's give it a shot, let's see what we can do.
I think some of that we're already doing, so when we talk about like the community school model that we're trying at Hoover, I think that that's an example. I was just looking at number three, sub-bullet C, so work to build a collective commitment of the community and staff to achieve our student learning goals. So in that, it's talking about that collective of the community, there's a commitment. I don't know if the... I don't know if the word collaboration would help to that, but, you know, I see our work, we, we've done a lot of work, for instance, in the set task force realm, and those conversations are continuing in the community, the community schools concept. Just this week, after Nancy and I met with Dr. Buck and Laurel to talk about planning the agenda, and after listening to last week's, all the different items that we approved for outside agreements with agencies and outside nonprofit groups, we've asked Laurel and I think Jean will put it together for us, but a list of all the outside groups that our district works with. Because I think sometimes, you know, we see it, we're here every, but not, not everybody's reading that board agenda, obviously. But it's amazing, all of the other outside groups for mental health, and for after-school care, and for all kinds of other interventions and supports. It's probably hundreds. So Jean is going to help pull that together for us and present it, again, to give us a broader view, and when we talk with the community, to help them understand some of those collaborations and things. So I hear exactly what you're saying. I'm just, I'm wondering, do we need to expand upon what's in here already, like in that number three C?
It, it was, and Jen, I didn't by any means mean to, to minimize the, the fact that we are working with others. It's just sometimes I think we, as an institution, will think that we have to be the driving, you know, we're going to solve this problem. And I think there are, worldly, there are, there've been examples where groups have come together to solve some pretty tough problems by willing to share responsibility, share technology, share interest. And that's, that, that was my only point for the discussion, so.
So maybe we need to go down at some point, as a board, with administrators that are responsible for helping us get to that more community collaborative environment, understand...
And, and I think, as you pointed out, the community schools, and I think we have some other initiatives, and as we have conversations with, with other districts, with Lynnmar, and other entities around, that we will, just to keep that open mind, that's all.
So do, do you feel, under number three, there's, so there's two items that have been suggested as add-ons, analyze student learning data aligned to student learning goals? That's, that's obviously been something that we've been discussing specifically. And then the align board presentations with five focus areas on strategic plan. My sense is, we already make it clear to administration that that's what we would like in some form, they need to align to one of those items, but that's just my opinion. I, I like, I personally like just laying it out there that we're looking for that analysis, that we're looking for data, that we want you all to be able to show us, and that's why we've been willing to invest in what we've been willing to invest in. So basically, we're going to put our money where our mouth is, and I think we need to hold ourselves accountable for that.
I just, and also in the start of... Talking about assessment, I just will again toss out the warning of, we're going to have a new assessment. If that's our only assessment, that's maybe difficult.
Well, I agree with you, because I don't, I don't think that's the assessment we want to hang our hat on. It's a dipstick for us, but for the assessments that we're looking at, it's the formative work that's driving the collaborative environment. And those are the things that are created by our teachers every day, to see how their kids are doing across third grade, or across fourth grade, or across 11th grade English, or whatever the case may be. So one suggestion might be for the alignment on that, on the C, would be work to build a collective commitment of the community and staff to achieve our student learning goals through collaboration and data. And just make it...
Yeah, because I don't think we should limit, I don't think we should be prescriptive in what data system.
Yep.
That, that seems reasonable to me.
What do you think about that here?
Yeah, I, I would agree. Multiply.
And that aligns with, that aligns with level one, H R S. I have it down. I have it down, alright.
Otherwise, it'll be on video, so.
That's great, yeah. I have it down.
Some of it, when we're talking about students be future-ready, and, and they have ownership in their, in their future. Somewhere along the line, there's dialogue that just with, with students that, that needs to be. And I hate to prolong this, but I, I just, which brings up the other, we've talked about it, I think, at other times. Is there a way that we can have direct input from students to the board? Whether it be a, a student representative that, that has a non-voting input? I, I've been more than impressed with some of our students that, that we have access to. And I would really like to hear, to have that kind of feedback from the students. That's what it's about. It's about them, and, and some of the criticisms that we hear from students is, we're acting on their part, yet they don't have. And I, I don't think we give them enough credit sometimes.
They were the most leveraging voices on both the technology committee last year and C I A C.
Well, and I think that's, that's maybe the heart of the matter is, I don't know that the students would have direct line to the board specifically. I think a commitment to making sure that students being on these task forces is a way for the board to send the signal that we expect to have a student voice as a part of the narrative, and that that guides the recommendations that come to the board, so...
And we can...
There's been a number of those task forces.
Try to elicit them to be part of presentations more often as well.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah, because I, I, we agree. I mean, student voice in this process is important, yeah.
Alright.
Alright, so we've got, we're going to amend C, eliminate maybe the three add-ons, and consolidate some ideas through that C work. And other than that, I think we're okay with three? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh huh.
With the edits, and that's perfect.
You got it.
Excellent, let's move on to four.
Four, foster a district culture that enables excellence and innovation. So I don't see anything in A or B that, that then we get to the next page.
Was that a thumbs up for four?
Um, no.
It's continued on the backside, oh, we have ideas. Oh, so sorry. So glad you're facilitating, President Laberty.
What would be a nice component to add to that, and may speak to some of the things that you've talked about, Linda, is just like we did in number three, where you added that piece about data? Adding, adding a piece into the HR component about utilizing data. Not being prescriptive of what kind, but just so that it's there. Because I would like, I think Gary's asked for some data, I would like to see some data. I've heard it from Linda a couple different times, heard it from Rod.
So where are you thinking to add that at?
Maybe B?
The...
I, that's where I don't know where.
I, so, so could we, could we combine this? I mean, the board's goal is to have, you know, a workforce that is as talented as we can get, that we support, that is well-compensated, that is able to effectively challenge and educate our students, and there needs to be some measure for that.
And they have the resources that they need to accomplish those tasks.
Right. Part of it talks about tools, so we need that.
The tools, sure.
So B really highlights that employee engagement piece. And then as I unpack C, D, and E, it's those things of how we are going to support them, whether it be through professional development, and certainly instructional leadership and collaboration. If the data piece, the data that we have right now is around employee engagement, and, which Rod unpacked at the last meeting, and if that's the data that you're looking for, then that would be B.
I think it's more than just that. I think it's, I think it's, it's understanding the, you know, engaged, equipped, how, how, are they engaged? How are they engaged? What are our, what's our attrition? What's our...
Retention.
Retention, I mean, it's, it's, it's looking at data related to all of those different pieces that fall underneath there. How do we know we're giving them the, the professional development that they need and want?
So maybe a statement about, like, providing, making sure that, that our, that the board is giving data to reflect that, that tools and data collection systems are in place to best enable us to reach the goals.
Or to, yeah, to evaluate. I don't even know.
It might be based on this year.
Yes, is B something about, expects a continuation of collaborative environment with an emphasis on employee engagement, guided by a high-quality human resources and data system to attend to, I think some of those E's you're, to attend to a staff that is equipped.
Engaged.
Engaged. And, and also to include the promotion of recruitment or retention of that last part.
Yeah.
So I think there's, just put those pieces in, and then, to me, that essentially covers all of these blue things. Because then we don't have to get down in the weeds of what those look like specifically. It's just sort of in the aggregate, we expect them to be engaged, to be equipped, to...
Educated.
Educated, yeah.
And for us to be able to have data, to be able to evaluate those.
And then have a data, a true grown-up, a true grown-up HR system.
Right, just giving them the, knowing that they have the education that they need, provide it.
They have the equipment or tools that they need, and that they're engaged, if you want to stick with the E's.
So instead of trying to wordsmith it right here at the board table tonight...
Yeah, let me work on it.
So you, you, you have a sense of where we want it to go, and trying to maybe in the next couple of weeks, pull something together. Either Dr. Buck or whoever can send that back out to us before the next meeting for just consideration, and then we'll finish that discussion at our next meeting, and fi, and kind of finalize that that's what we want to do.
So thumbs up if you're okay with revising four, we'll give it some, based on your feedback.
Yep.
Alright.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Five, we see, leading through sound policy, ensuring transparent ethical and legal operations. I don't see any issues with that, anybody? No? Alright, five is good. Six, sustain and enhance district resources through continuous planning and fiduciary oversight. So, David?
I just need to say, I like the change from sufficient to appropriate. I, I just wanted to pull that out, because I really, I think that that's, that's more reflective of what we're having to face in this environment.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I really like that change.
Any, any other, I like, you know, the save extension, of course, is a huge thing for us and most other districts in the entire state. Anything else in there in the suggestions? Got the fiscal years.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up, thumbs up. Nice job for the, the new guy, yeah. Exactly.
Very well done.
Alright, take notes, everybody.
Take notes.
Alright.
And then finally, lucky seven.
Now, C, advocate for public education. And needs of C R C S D and Iowa students. Number seven, I don't see any, any changes to that mentioned. Anybody have any additions or suggestions there? That's a, that's one of the three key things, is for us to be advocates for public education, to make sure we have resources to, to teach our students, and thumbs up on that?
Thumbs up.
We're good?
Very good.
Alright, we're good. Is there anything that's not on here? Again, these, these are things that we had discussed earlier, because they align with the strategic plan and Dr. Buck's goals as well. And is there anything else on here that we've missed? So I, I always worry there's some little thing. Have you, have you seen anything? I mean, obviously, you guys are coming to us and thinking about this on, on a regular basis, so anything else you saw on there?
I think we just try to remain cognizant that this stayed high level and not too far down. We do have a strategic plan that's one cut deeper. We have school improvement plans that are much, much deeper. And so know that all of that information is based on your, your guidance, so.
I think it would be helpful, too, again, as we talked about messaging and consistency. So the one thing that we, we've heard through the engagement surveys and just being on the board long enough, you know, we're always looking for that new thing, and there's always all this change. And I think it might be good, actually, we're, we're looking at consistency. So the high reliability schools is the framework. We've got a strategic plan that's stable and has matched what the board's been talking about for a number of years. We have a superintendent who is hired by the board to work on meeting that consistent path. Now, there's factors outside of it that we're working on, like advocating for more money from the state, and working with legislators on other laws that we need to do what we need to do, making sure that we have facilities that meet the needs of 21st century learning and all that. But, but really, we're being pretty consistent across the board from the board level, and we see that really, I think, coming through the superintendent. And so if, if, if staff at all feel like we're not being consistent, again, which some of that came out, where is that, where is that coming from? And I would just challenge you, from the board's perspective, you know, again, to dive deep into where you're finding those. I know you're going to look at each building, because from our view, we want to keep this consistent. And I think we all agree with trying to get rid of those things that are distracting from really that core, core mission, so.
Yeah, and that was...
I'm sorry. I think the more that we can use those terminologies, the phrasing that are, that go through, like, Noreen, you said access. You're probably going to get sick of hearing the word access. But the more that we repeat that message from the board goals to the strategic plan to all of those things, the more that people are able to link where it all goes, and understand that, yeah, this is linked to this, which is linked to this, and there's a purpose. And Dr. Buck's not just picking the latest craze and the latest fad to go out and, and shift. So I think if we can, if we can use those in all of the documents, the phraseology in all of the documents, it would help, too.
And I think the other thing, too, just listening to the kickoff meeting, I heard it out of your mouth, it's on video, Dr. Buck, that if staff see misalignments, they should feel comfortable saying something, because we know that what we've been doing may have been the greatest thing in the world, and maybe it's still a great thing, but if it's not aligning with making sure that every student is future-ready and meeting all of these goals and the plans that we have in place, then something's out of alignment, and we need to know that and look into that. So I think, again, that's not the board's job or, or purpose, but, you know, we certainly are cognizant of it and appreciate all that you do, and all the way through teaching staff, custodians, the bus drivers, oh my gosh, I was following a line of buses over here tonight and just thinking about the first person in the day that my daughters saw sometimes, that totally made, set their day, made them feel better, was that bus driver that, well, sometimes, you know, there was a little treat involved or something sometimes. You know, that, that totally made their day sometimes. So anyway, it's, it all's aligned and, and together, so. Anything else for the good of the order from the board about our goals and things before we move on and?
Hey, thanks for the feedback. This is helpful. We'll, we'll get this tightened up a little bit and back out to you.
What you guys do with us, so. Alright, with that, let's see here, I'm sure I don't miss anything. We have the school board calendar, and with that, I think the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.